Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the October 21st, 2025 work session to order. Please arrive for the Pledge of Allegiance. The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for purposes of rebroadcasting. All board members are in attendance with the exception of Mashada, who will be arriving shortly. Next, we'll go to recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we do that, if I may have your approval, I want to talk about Unity Day. Unity Day is a meaningful opportunity for Methacton community to come together in a celebration of kindness, inclusion, and respect. Across all of our schools tomorrow, October 22nd, students and staff will demonstrate how Methacton stands united against bullying. Hallways and classrooms will be filled with orange, from bulletin board displays to shirts proudly worn by students and staff. There will be thoughtful conversations that foster empathy and connection, paired with hands-on activities like creating sidewalk chalk messages of positivity and participating in unity walks around the schools. Through these efforts, Methacton continues to strengthen its culture of respect and inclusion, reminding everyone that together, we can create schools where every student feels seen, valued, and supported. I look forward to seeing everyone in orange tomorrow, standing proudly with me for a stronger Methacton. And with that, I also want the board members to know that you're also welcome to join us in some of those activities as well, and we appreciate having you there. And then on with guests and scheduled speakers. First, we have Regina talking about Support Staff Career Pathways Program. As Dr. Regina gets set up here, this is one of the programs that we were trying to help support not only our support staff, but also address some of the challenges of teacher certification, not only here in Methacton, but across the area. Dr. Regina?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, as Dr. Zerbi said, we're going to be speaking a little bit about our Support Staff Career Pathways that exist in the district. Can you hear me okay? Let me get it a little closer. How's that? I can even hear myself. That's scary. All right. First thing, just going to kind of set the mood a little bit for the board. If you haven't seen these things before, you will now. Really, naturally, the teacher shortage that exists currently in Pennsylvania is a real thing. You only have to read a couple ads on the web to see how bad the shortage is. There are certain parts of the Commonwealth that isn't as bad as others, but basically, we're all seeing a shortage in a lot of very specific areas, and probably one of the greatest ones is around special education. Speech-language pathologists and psychologists are probably our three biggest. I just kind of clipped a couple articles here. These are just the most recent ones that I was able to find related to some of the shortages that are out there. If we look at the data that's sent out by PDE, this line graph is something you probably have seen before, but essentially, what you're looking at is an orange line that's going down and a blue line that's trending up. The orange line is the line that illustrates the recent certifications that are coming out of PDE, and the blue line is indicating the amount of emergency permits that PD has to give people because we don't have enough certifications. And as you can see, in 2022 is the first time in history where emergency permits is actually greater than the amount of certifications that PDE is issuing to first-time teachers, and you can see that trend kind of following in that route. What I'm here to propose to you tonight are there are three pathways that we have in order to offer those opportunities to our own support staff members, and it really is based on where they're at. One pathway is the associates pathway, which essentially is for support staff members who want to become teachers and maybe not have had that opportunity yet to explore that. And there's an associate's degree that they can explore in education through Montgomery County Community College. The second is, what if they have a two-year degree as an associate's and want to explore their bachelor's? There is a pathway that we offer through Point Park University that allows them to get their four-year degree. And then what if they have a four-year degree, but it's not in education? They would then look at the post-bachelors, and that's through Central Susquehanna Intermediate Union, noted CSIU, and in two years, they can have their teaching certification. And all of them are in special education or elementary education, but the ones we'll be talking about today, of course, is special ed, because that's really where our shortage is. Why you see two of them in green and one in blue? The two I'm going to be speaking specifically tonight about are the associates pathway and the post-bachelors pathway. And why I'm speaking about those is because we have two different opportunities to receive grant funding. One is going to be through the MCIU grant, the other is through the Workforce Board, and it allows us to subsidize some of these programs for our support staff members. If we look at some of the cost breakdown on this slide, you'll notice based on the grant funding, both from the MCIU and the Workforce Board funding, we'll actually pay less out of pocket as a district than we would with our own CBA language to sponsor individuals to go through these programs. So you might be asking, why am I bringing it to you if it costs us less and why are we talking about it? The reason is, is because in order to get both the grant money and the Workforce Board money, we have to, as a district, put 100% of that cost upfront for our staff members. It's a requirement of both the grant and the Workforce Board. And so in order to do that, it does give us access to these dollars, but it will have us sign an MOA with our MASP group to allow individuals to be a part of these programs. Now, you may remember, I spoke to you about a Kutztown Instructional Coaching Program a little while ago. It's the same premise. We pay for it upfront, but instead of just owing us one year of employment, they have to stay with us for two, or they would have to pay that money back. We also have the ability to accept or deny people into the program, so it's not just a floodgate of people going into it. We're looking on taking on five people in five-people increments. If we were to go past that, we would come back to the board and be requesting to go beyond the five. If we look at what our next steps would be, if we're interested in going forward with this program, the first would be to approve the Para-Educator Preparation Pathway Grant MOU with Montgomery County Community College, and this is through the MCIU, and we'd also approve the MOA with MASP. The second would be to approve the Post-Bachelor Program through Bloomboard Educator Advancement Program. They're through the CSIU, and approve the MOA with MASP. That MOA will be the same MOA. I just wanted to make sure I listed it twice so you could see that both of those will require that. For important information I need to know about both of them is, first of all, there is no additional cost that go to the MCIU or Bloomboard. They are just the vehicle to get us into these programs. Again, we'll have five employee increments that will go into them, and employees will have to reimburse the district fully if they leave after two years, before two years of completing the program, or if they don't pass a particular course with a B or better, or for pass/fail courses, pass/fail. That's the proposal this evening, and I'll take any questions if the board has them.
Thank you, Dr. Regina. What we're proposing, if the board so is inclined to, is to put these on for your consideration on the agenda for next week, which would be putting on the MOAs and MOUs. Ms. Clary?
So let's start with that. What does MOA and MOU stand for?
Well, I should have thought of that, shouldn't I?
Yes.
MOU is a memorandum of understanding, and an MOA is a memorandum of agreement. And the difference between the two are this. If we have language that already exists, and we're trying to clarify that language or alter that language, we use the term MOU, a different memorandum of understanding. If there's no language that exists around a matter, we use the terminology MOA to create a new agreement that is an agreement between those two parties. Good question.
Okay. Thank you. Can you go to the cost breakdown slide?
Sure.
So can you just explain this a little bit more to me? You talked about grant support. How much is the grant support? I guess I got maybe lost in what you were saying.
No, no problem. Well, I didn't go over the exact amount that the grant would be supporting, so that's a good question.
Is it only supporting, you're talking about five people? So is it just supporting? And then you said five people in increments, so I wasn't quite...
No problem. Yeah, so we would do it in increments of five, so we would accept five people into the program. If we were to go beyond five, we would come back to the board to say, we have more interest in this program. We'd like to take five more. The savings, so for the grant money for the MCC program, the minimum it would be is $2,845. The maximum it could be is fully subsidizing the program. It depends how many people go into it and how much grant money they have. The cost breakdowns that you see on the screen are me taking the minimum amounts. I'm not assuming full amounts on any of these. The same thing will happen with the Workforce Board. The minimum amount would be $4,000. They have indicated it's based on the money that they receive from the state, and if it's not used, we could get more than 4,000. So again, I use the minimum amounts. I'm going to follow-up question, or follow-up response, though, to what about the graduate in CBA versus the undergrad associates in CBA? What is in our contract language for an undergraduate degree for a MASP employee? It's 90% of the state rate. So what that's indicating, that's 90% of the rate that we use as a district for the same number of credits that you would get in the MCCC program to compare apples to apples. The graduate in CBA rate is 75%. So graduate rates and undergraduate rates, they're different, but that 75% number is then allocated to this graduate in CBA rate.
Is the MCC table the yellow brown table?
Yes.
Okay, and then the Workforce Board is the green table, right?
Yes.
Okay. How long are these grants available for?
So the MCC grant is 2027, June 30, 2027. So not this June, but the subsequent June.
Right.
And we will be doing our MOA until June 30, 2027.
So we could get, in theory, at least if five people were interested, we could get all five through with that grant process?
Yes, they will accept experience credits. They'll expect credits, take credits that they may have taken in associate's programs before, so they'll evaluate that when they take an applicant, and they'll determine how many credits they'll need. They believe that they're going to get a grant extension beyond 2027, but we can't assume that, so we're not going to do the MOA beyond that 2027 date.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Marisky?
So further questions on this table? This is per person?
That is correct. This is per person.
And if I interpret this correctly, for example, the MCC table, under our current agreement, contract with employees, we would basically cover the 17388. And with the grant, this is the net cost per person, and that's through the contract period, which is 2027.
That's correct. So the bottom number is what we would pay to using the state rate, 90%, that's what we would cost. The reason the number of the MCC is lower is because credits at the MCC are less than the state rate. Therefore, the difference number that I gave of the 2,000 and odd change, it doesn't make up that difference because the credit rate is different in that program.
Okay. I think that... And where there's no guarantee that this would be renewed after 2027.
That is correct.
It's available now, and...
And it would come back to the board beyond 2027 to determine whether you want to renew the MOA.
Okay, I think that's all my questions. Thanks.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, thank you, Che. Just for clarity, for transparency, that my spouse is currently participating in this program as an instructional aide, so that's on the record. So for me to understand if I'm going to be able to vote on this, is there a change in the employee share? Are we paying 100% versus what they would get in their collective bargaining agreement?
Great question. Yes, there would be. In both of these programs, the employee share would be zero.
Yeah, okay. And then I think, just for Claire, I believe these costs are the two-year cost, not the yearly cost. Is that correct?
It's the full cost of the program.
The full cost for the program.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you.
Any questions to my left? Ms. Perdue?
I do think this is a great opportunity and a program to have, just because I know we've talked in the past, and probably education more than often in reference to the number of permits and the decreasing number of teachers coming out with certifications. So I do think this is great. Can I just ask, when you prepare, because this will be posted to our board meeting minutes or presentation, can we just have it updated a little bit, just to reflect some of the questions that we're asking in reference to the total cost, so it indicate per person, and then maybe, I think, just define some of the acronyms. I think it would be helpful to have when we look at it later, or someone were to pull it later on to review it at a later time. But I definitely think it's a great opportunity to have, and I just wanted to know, in reference to who qualifies for this program, can you clarify that part again, exactly who makes the decision, like, as far as who can participate in this program?
Great, great question. So the first question is, are there limits to who can participate? And the answer is yes. For the first program, actually, the answer is no, right? Any one of our MASP staff members that wants to explore associate's green education, they could do that today, and we would approve it. They would just go through the CBA, as you can see above, at that $17,388 rate, if it was at the state institution rate. For the other program, though, they have to be an instructional aide, because part of the benefit of this program is they do not need to take a leave of absence to do their student teaching. They can do it while they're in that role, and which is a huge benefit, because as Dr. Sorjini will tell you, when we have had to do this traditionally in the past, that person has to take a leave of absence with no pay and pay full amount of their benefits in order to student teach to then come back. And so they can stay right in that IA role, still do their same responsibilities as an IA, and do almost a co-teaching model with the teacher that they're with. And as an IA, again, it's for a special education certification, so the IA with the special ed teacher working together, doing that work, and it's a real benefit naturally to our employees. And as you know, this is, it's near and dear to my heart, career pathways, right? It's something we created, the Methacton Aspiring Leadership Program, for our teachers that wanted to be administrators. We've done it for our teachers that want to be coaches. We believe in this for our support staff members that want to be teachers. And so this is definitely a program. I think that is something that we're excited about, and we're excited about our staff having access to it and not having to take a leave of absence or pay money upfront for a program like this that would benefit them, hopefully to get to the career that they're looking for. Thank you.
And then with, I know there's a lot of discussions about certain aids being cut, and is there any impact to this program, as you know, as of date?
No.
Any concerns?
No concerns to either of these programs. That naturally could change in the future. The grant money for the MCIU has already been established. The Workforce Board, though, that can change annually, and so it would just be something that we would have to evaluate each year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thiel?
Thank you. First, I had a question about the student teaching. So you read my mind, and I do just want to reiterate, I currently support teachers seeking their reading specialist certification, and it's a really big issue for them to find the time to do the student teaching while teaching to get that certification. So that's really fantastic to hear, that that's not an issue with this program, like gold stars all around for that. And then the other question that I had is, I think you said the timeframe is two years? Is it...
It can be. At the maximum, can be two years. Both of the programs will look at experience credits and any credits they may have taken in institutions in the past. And so, for instance, with the associates program, they told us, it's almost at minimum, they take nine credits just from experience alone in education, but we can't guarantee that naturally, but it could be more. And so it could take less than two years based on how many credits they take. The second program, it becomes as speed at which people are comfortable. And so we have an individual right now in that program that in one year is willing to take every credit they have to to get right into it. So that's intense, but they can do it if that's something that they're interested in doing.
Thanks for that. And then, just because it's not here, I think, are we indicating that it has to be a special ed certification because it's not on the paper, or is that what we're encouraging, or is that a hope?
It's all that we'll approve.
It's all that you'll approve?
Yes.
Okay.
And for those that don't know, Katie, you will know this, you can get a certification in Pennsylvania, teaching certification, and then just take an exam for almost any other certification. There's only five that you can't, but any other certification to then get that. So the reality is, we're giving the special ed cert, but if they wanted to take the test to become a biology teacher, they could in the future if they wanted to. We're just endorsing the special ed certification part.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the questions.
Any other questions?
So then, just when we do the motion, if we want to go ahead and do it for next week, would we want to put in that the maximum cost would be $86,000 or under $87,000? Because that's seven, I mean, that's five employees, or do we not want to put amounts into the motion?
If anything, we may want to talk about the five-person limit to it as opposed to the cost associated with it, but certainly, that's naturally a conversation that the board could have with Dr. Zerbi if you'd like to put a cost into it. Any other questions?
Ms. Graff?
Yeah. Can you define what CBA stands for?
Collective Bargaining Agreement?
Thank you. And I guess the other question that I had was about the five-people limitation. Tell me why you think we should limit it to five?
Because although the cost of the program is less, is, in our CBA, a person is limited to 12 credits annually. This, they could take more than 12 credits if they wanted to, which could push the cost all into one year, and if we had a lot of people do it, it might not be a cost that we could absorb very easily. It's possible you could, but I would hate to do that to us without having some opportunity to say, okay, let us pause right now, make sure we can absorb this before we move on to another five.
So I think, I mean, I think I hear what you're saying. I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense, and I think that's really smart, I guess. The other question I have is, do we know in advance what the plan is for the person in terms of the credits they would be taking and how many, so that we could have an estimate upfront?
We will, once we accept the individual. So it's going to take, there's two steps to it. One, them vetting the number of credits they're going to need, and the second would be the speed at which that individual could take the courses. Some of them are asynchronous, and so it isn't the typical, I'm going to go and attend this class. They can actually take them, some of them at an accelerated rate, and so that determination would be based off of those two trigger points.
So we wouldn't necessarily know that when they were starting out?
That is correct.
Okay. I guess what I was thinking is, because we don't know the duration that the grants will be available, having or allowing additional people to participate would be beneficial to the district, even if it has like a short-term cost impact, it would actually lessen the long-term cost.
Without a doubt. For those that would go into the CBA pathway, you're absolutely right.
And we would be essentially requiring them to sign a two-year agreement that they would stay and teach at Methacton. That also would help us in some other areas. The other question I guess I had was around the two-year agreement. The statement here is that they're going to reimburse the district if they leave within two years. Is that a prorated, or is it like, you reimburse us 100% of what we've spent if you leave within two years?
Great question. The way I write them into the MOA is, upon your completion of this coursework, it is a two-year period. If you leave within that two years, it's the full amount, you go back to the district.
Okay.
Great question.
That's great. So I guess I'm okay with the five, but you know, to Ms. Cancro's comment, I wonder if maybe we could consider a dollar amount?
Okay.
That somehow we can sort of estimate what that would be, and then if you could potentially get another person or two, might be worth it.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'm open to it either way.
Okay, thank you. Great question.
Any other questions or comments, Ms. Austin?
Yeah, thank you for this. I would suggest, to Ms. Graff's point, could we do a do-not-exceed with the motion, like a not-to-exceed amount, and whatever you think we could get for that. And then, I guess I just was wondering, a sort of nitpicky question about the reimbursing of, reimbursing to the district if not, if they leave within two years of completion. So is that the full amount? Because I know there's grants associated with this. So is that the full amount, including the grants? Like, would they have to pay back the grants?
Good question. No, they'd just be out of pocket to the district, and no, we would not be. So it could be, if the grant for the associates program paid 100% of it, then that, that would be a benefit, that they would owe nothing back to the district, because we would have put no money forward. But any money that would have come out of the district, we would expect the reimbursement for, yes. Thank you.
And that is how the grant's written? It's just, it's whatever?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Dr. Regina? Seeing none, we'll proceed forward with adding the motion to the agenda for next week. Thank you so much, Dr. Regina, everyone. Next on the agenda, we have the Methacton High School renovation recommendations. Before we bring the Schrader Group forward, just have a few quick comments. Tonight's high school renovation concept presentation, along with the accompanying 10-year budget forecast inclusive of both the initial high school project and the district's conference of 10-year master facilities plan, is intended to provide the board of school directors with the information necessary to act upon the motions listed under the agenda item 13D on next week's meeting agenda. Approval of these motions would authorize the design team to advance into the schematic design phase, enabling further development of the renovation concept presented this evening. This concept represents an evolution of our discussions initiated during the September 25 board meeting, where we were tasked with segmenting the Methacton High School renovation into smaller, more manageable projects, both from a construction management, cost control, and risk mitigation standpoint, in alignment with the priorities identified by the board and echoed throughout our school community. This concept addresses critical facility needs within the parameters of the 10-year budget forecast estimated between $121 million and $125 million. The design team determined that a baseline of warm, safe, and dry scope alone, while addressing initial infrastructure, would fall short of meaningful response to the established priorities, resulting in a substantial expenditure with limited visual or functional impact. To address this challenge, the design team focused on the oldest and most infrastructure-deficient sections of the building, the west wing, which contains the greatest concentration of aging equipment, persistent water infiltration, and systems in need of replacement. This targeted approach provides the most immediate value for our investment and establishes a clear path for subsequent projects. Leveraging prior design concepts, specifically option 2B, this Leveraging prior design concepts, specifically option 2B, this renovation strategy positions the district to address the most pressing facility needs first, while structuring future phases to modernize the remaining building approximately 10 years or so from now. This renovation concept is both strategically sound and fiscally responsible. It addresses critical needs, aligns with the community and board priorities, maximizes long term value, and fits within the 10 year capital plan, all while maintaining the flexibility to support other facility need projects district wide. With that, I ask the board to grab their paper presentation and join me in the front row. I believe there's some visuals here this evening that are important for the board to see.
While everyone's getting seated, I do want to introduce Mr. Jeff Magic from Snyder Hoffman Associates. He's here with us this afternoon or this evening to talk about mechanical electrical plumbing engineering with the proposed project here. So thank you for having us. Good evening. Closer to the mic. Okay, thank you. All right. So thank you for that, Dr. Zerby, that introduction. We do want to go over three things tonight. First is the overall high school long term campus plan. That will show us what the the long term goal is beyond just this initial project. Then we'll get into the initial project scope, and then what remains after the initial project is completed, what's left to do as part of the the high school project. So we'll get right into the overall high school long term campus plan. It is very familiar. One of the options, it was 2Z that you're seeing here on the screen. This is the one that addresses the most of your priorities. So long term, we really want to address all of the traffic issues, the congestion on site, and then the additional parking that is a goal for the district. So in this option, the goal is to again, separate all of your vehicles. You have your buses coming in from, let me see if I can get this laser work. There we go, from Mill Road. So buses would loop in, drop off, and go back out onto Mill Road. Separately, you'd have parent drop off coming in through here, dropping off at the main entrance, going back out onto Crebel Mill. And then students would have their own separate entrance, coming in over here, going into their lot, and then coming across a nice boulevard to the new main entrance here, not having to cross any traffic. So we feel like this is the best option for a long term campus plan. It addresses all of the needs that the the district has identified, and we feel that it's a really strong option moving forward. We'd like to present this to the township as a long term plan. For the building, again, this is familiar, as Dr. Zerby mentioned, option 2B. This again is just a concept at this point. We really have to design what this is going to look like. But the areas in blue are additions, and it includes a pool, a new performing arts space, some classrooms down here to replace what was the west wing, and then a true new entrance that has a secure vestibule and administrative area over here. There is a new athletic entrance between the pool and the auditorium, and we're renovating the rest of the the west wing. The pool would be infilled and converted to classroom spaces or fitness center. And then the green space here is a later renovation, but that's your current library. We'd like to open that up for a common space. So generally, this is the plan. If you remember back from the presentation from option 2B, it does address all of the priority one and priority two items that were identified previously. So we feel like this is the the strongest long term plan for the district to move forward with. And again, if you remember, the baseline scope would be covered for all of the white areas, and we can go through that later in the presentation. So moving into an initial project, obviously, we cannot afford all of that in one lump project. So what can we get done early to address all of the priorities that we can and still be able to afford it in that four to five year timeframe of an initial project? So what we're thinking, let's just go back to those priorities. Again, the the two big ones are the traffic flow onsite and the traffic flow in the building. And we feel like we're going to address those pretty nicely with this option here. Building a new pool with eight lanes. Again, your existing pool has six lanes. Creating a fitness and wellness center, a life skills apartment transition space, and then that commons area to enable the lunch and learn program. Those were all of your top priorities moving in to this process. And then in group two, we had increasing the quantity of parking spaces, creating a steam center, a fab lab, a new auditorium, bringing those classrooms up to a standard size, and then improvements to the performing arts spaces. So keep those in mind as we move forward. As far as the site goes, what can we address in an initial project? Or what can we pull out that's maybe can be deferred to a later date? We feel like, you know, we're still trying to get the goal of improving the circulation onsite, improving the traffic flow, and increasing the the quantity of parking spaces. So what we're doing here is when we demolish the west wing, we're able to build a new lot up here, and then we take advantage of the space in the front of the building and build a new lot down here. We're still able to create a separate bus loop. So we're coming in off of Crebel Mill, coming in front of the building, looping around back where the new pool would be built, and coming back out onto Crebel Mill. That's its own pathway. And then parents can come into this lot eight right here in the front of the building, loop around, you can go in and out depending on how long the queue is, and drop off at the main entrance, and then go right back out onto Crebel Mill. And then your third entrance over here by Farina is the entrance for students. They can come in, go to their lot, and then walk across that boulevard to the main entrance. The only downside here is they'd have to walk across where the buses are, but we can manage that through traffic mitigation in the mornings. So you're getting all of the improvements that we saw in the previous plan for the long term. We're eliminating the need to mill and overlay this lot over on the side. So you you maintain the parking spaces that you have. We've eliminated Farina, and we've eliminated that connection to Mill Road. All of those items, we feel, can be deferred to a later time. They're not critical at this moment. And at the end of the day, you're gaining 171 spaces for parking just for the high school. That brings us up to about where the goal was to get everything off of the ancillary streets. So no one would be parking on Anvil. No one will need the church parking lot. Everybody would be able to be parking onsite. Sure. So the eliminations from the original for the for the long term master plan, we have Farina remains onsite. The lot over here where the students park, all of that remains as it is. We're not milling or overlaying that. And then the big one is the connection to Mill Road. We're not pursuing that as part of this initial phase. All right. So that's the site. As we get into the building, we'll go through the phases of this, but the initial project, we are proposing to build the new construction pieces in blue, the heavy renovation, which is this orange color, that's the rest of the west wing, and the pool infill, and then a smaller renovation to the the library to create that commons. And I'll show you what that looks like. But first, I want to kind of go back to that classroom utilization that's been a question. Currently, we're at an enrollment, I believe, as of this month, 1,433 students. The target all along, even when we were looking at a new construction high school, was 1,600 students. Now, the assumptions right now are that we're utilizing 80% of the space, and that's kind of a standard for us based on our A4LE and CEFPI standards. You want to be at that 80% rate or a little bit below that. You're currently, I believe, it's 73% using your spaces right now. So you have the flexibility to move up a little bit. But based on special programs and things like that, you really want to be right around that 80% target to maximize your space. The the other note here is that special ed classrooms do not receive any capacity unless they are self contained, such as autistic support. So those students are typically moving in and out of those classrooms. There are dedicated classrooms for special ed. They're just not assigned capacity unless they're autistic support or emotional support. So right now, we have 94 teaching stations, and that means all of the spaces that are assigned capacity in the building. You currently have 94 of those. We're projecting in this new program to have 88. So we're eliminating six spaces. Your existing student capacity is 1784, assuming that 80% utilization rate. And then our proposed for the the project one here is 1,664 students. So we're right above that target of 1,600, but it allows us the flexibility to go up about 10%. Yes. Sure. So, so that's just, that's just classrooms, essentially. It's not necessarily eliminating a teacher. Maybe it's a teacher that might be in a different location or a shared space. But we're not, we're not proposing to eliminate any teachers by any means. Potentially, I might have to rely on some of our admin team to help me answer that one. But right now, based on what the admin and including the principal have indicated, they're able to eliminate six classrooms at the moment. I don't believe it affects the teachers as much. All right. And this this chart here just shows the proposed square footage of the building versus the existing. Right now, we're at about 317,000 square feet, and we're proposing a building that is about 319,000 square feet. So even though we're reducing classrooms, we're not reducing square footage overall. The difference here is that we're adding square footage to the pool, which is larger, and the auditorium, which is larger than you currently have. So those two things bring up the square footage, and then we have slightly less square footage for classroom space. So I'll take questions on that at any point. But the next couple of slides here show a potential phasing plan of this option one or this initial project. Essentially, our, once the construction manager is on board and we have a design, the phasing plans will be pretty critical. But this is just our first pass at seeing what could happen as part of a schedule for a project moving forward. So the goal is first to build the new pool and the new classroom wing. And those essentially, assuming that everything stays on target, could be started as early as March of '27. And then you'd be able to open those the following summer. So you'd need through the summer of 2028 to to get those projects done. At the same time, you would be able to start to demolish the B wing. So the plan is to find spaces within the existing building that are not used to relocate some of those programs, demolish the building over that summer, and then start to build the auditorium space. So we're able to utilize the underutilized spaces within the existing building to get rid of the B wing, and then we can start construction on the auditorium performing arts spaces while the other spaces are under construction. So you can see the overlap. Auditorium would start potentially the fall of 2027. That would last through the end of 2028. So there's overlap here. You will have construction essentially in this area and the the classroom wing as well. The pool, we would wait until the end of the swim season and then start to infill that starting the spring and summer of 2028. That would likely be complete by the end of 2028. So at the end of 2028, you'd have all of these spaces open. You'd have auditorium, pool, classroom wing, and pool infill space while you're still maintaining the west wing. So we don't need any modulators because we have all of the swing space to utilize at this point. Then, once those are occupied, we can start to demolish the B wing, or sorry, the the west wing. That would take about three months. And then the last phase is the infill of space to create that new entry, conversion of the library to the commons, and then renovation of that west wing. And we're thinking by the end of 2029, you'd have the building complete. There's still some site work to be to be done with the parking lots after that. So you'd probably be into 2020, 2030 at that point. But essentially, you'd get the building by about four years from now. Here is a quick schedule. Obviously, there's a design process involved with this. So assuming that there's a motion to move forward next month, or sorry, next week, we can get into design, and that takes about 13 months to get through design. Then we'd be able to bid in early 2027 and start construction in 2027, which goes through 2030, as I just mentioned. So this is just a little bit of a different graphic to show you the overlaps and the construction periods here, and then the the length of that process. Skip that video. So this video, excuse me, this video will show you, I don't know why it's not working. There you go. So the video will show you just what what's happening onsite. It doesn't exactly time out to the the items that I just went through, but it'll show you an idea of what's happening onsite. So construction would begin for that front area and for the area where the pool is. The pool and the classroom wing essentially would be complete about the same time. They're simultaneous construction processes here. You're still going to be utilizing that front area for all of the construction staging. So you're not going to have the parking yet. You're then going to be able to move the students into those spaces and knock down part of the B wing to get the auditorium up and running. So likely, all of these areas would be under construction at the same time. And then this is what you would see as a completed piece here before we can start to knock down the B wing. So then, and then the west wing comes down, and then you'll be, you'll be able to start the infill of that space. And you can see how there's still some site work to be completed for that front area and creating that other parking lot. And then eventually, you have your final site layout here. So that gives you a little bit of an idea that the dates don't quite line up to what we just went through, but follow the dates on the slides, and the the video is is secondary here. And then there's questions about how does this really impact the internal circulation? So this video quickly just addresses how we're really improving that internal traffic flow and really external traffic flow just by turning the entry to the building. Now you're facing Germantown Pike, and now you're bringing everybody in to the site from one location instead of having eight different entrances to the building. So we would build the nadatorium, have that main entrance. You can have that as an athletics entrance and as an auditorium entrance, coming in through the the nadatorium and performing arts, and then convert the library into that commons. You can see now how the commons now serves the auditorium, serves the gym, and serves the nadatorium. All of the public spaces are now in one location, and you have this major entry point. There's no doubt that this is your main entrance at this point. And once you're in the building, you now have a main street going down this direction here, and then another main street going down here, connecting to that east wing. So circulation is improving through this just by creating these different entrances. You definitely have a secure entry here, and then a secondary entry here for evening events. The other point is that there's a a vertical circulation here, a stairwell, that will connect you immediately. As soon as you come in the main entrance, you can go directly upstairs and get to your classrooms on the second floor there. So we really think that this is going to improve internal traffic flow throughout the the process, and and hopefully, students can get to their classes a little bit quicker. The remainder of the building, so we talked about all the additions and and some of the heavier renovations, the areas in white that we're showing here that originally were just baseline scope. We still have to do some upgrades just to get everything connected. So there will be electrical upgrades to support the new new construction. That's fire alarm, the PA system, transformer, switchgear, and then first responder infrastructure. We have to upgrade that stuff just to get it to tie into the new stuff. The central plant is probably in the worst condition. That's one of your major priorities to get done in the first project. So we will be replacing the existing hot water plant and adding a new condensing boiler. Then there will be some miscellaneous replacement of pumps and VFDs. And then it will be important to rebalance all of your systems since you're reconfiguring a lot of things throughout the wings. There are still things that are connected through here that will have to be balanced. There are still things that are connected through here that will have to be balanced to make sure that everything is working properly. We did include the entire remainder of the west wing to be fully renovated. So that means all of your unit ventilators in that, in that spaces would be gone, upgraded to new systems, your roof, your windows, all of your internal things, casework, and all of that stuff. And then we have critical upgrade, uh, critical roofing upgrades. That's essentially the area of the west wing and the mid wing. Those areas are either out of warranty or coming out of warranty very soon. So we decided to bring that into this first project as a priority. The, the next couple of slides, they're the cost estimates from CHA. I do want to just flip to the very bottom line here and show you that the estimated cost of this initial project with escalation is $113 million. And that does include an allowance of 7.5 million for additional baseline scope that we did not just cover. So there may be items that we want to pull in that would have been done in the other projects, pull that in up to get done a little bit earlier as part of project one. And those are yet to be defined. So that's the initial project. I do want to just briefly go through the remaining projects, and then we'll take any questions. Jeff will be better to, better suited to discuss some of these things since they're heavy on the MEP. The only thing I will add is there are finish upgrades that are going to be required, things like ceilings and casework, and then roofing upgrades for the remainder of the building that we are deferring that can last a little bit longer. But you will have to address them in 10 to 12 years, somewhere in that range. Jeff.
So as Devin mentioned, we'll be taking on some of the baseline scope in the first project. These would be assigned as the remaining scope that you'd be considering for future projects. Replacement of the chill water plant, the existing plant is scheduled to be refurbished and is, is good for 10 to 15 years from now. We'll be replacing the remainder of the existing HVAC systems within the facility. So unit vents would get converted to other systems, air handling units replaced. The controls, piping, insulation would be replaced throughout the existing building. Those are all in fair condition, need to be replaced in 10 to 20 years. So that's the time we look at that. The generator lighting upgrades, same thing. Your existing lighting's been retrofitted with LED tubes. But as part of a major renovation, you'd want to go ahead with the LED fixtures. And then the building envelope, so that's the roof, windows, and the architectural scope there. Finish upgrades, plumbing fixtures, fire suppression and security. So essentially, from our standpoint, at the end of this project, that's a new building on that half. So you have similar systems on both sides of the addition. So that is essentially a complete overhaul of the mechanical and electrical systems.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. I'm sure there's questions for him moving forward. I do want to just step back again, look at the priorities one more time because the alternate to this is really just doing a cost base renovation based on the baseline scope. And we would not be able to address any of these priorities in that case. So just want to reiterate that we are addressing all the priorities in the initial project. And that the alternative to that is really to go back to that baseline scope, which if you remember, was about $109 million in the estimate. And say, we're not going to get any of these, but we are going to get the upgraded systems and, and all, all the things that go along with that. So just a comparison there. I'm sure there are plenty of questions, so we would love to answer them for you.
Thank you, Devin, and thank you, Jeff, for sharing that with us. Are there questions from members of the board? Ms. Steele?
Thank you. This was a great presentation. Thank you. The initial question that I have actually has to do with the part of the building. I'm just trying to find the slide that I was looking at. Of the renovations, the future projects, the roof on the part of the building that is newer, so not being looked at. So I know the older roof is almost out of warranty or out of warranty. Where's the roof that's going to stay? How's that condition?
We're talking about the rest of the roof.
The, the roof that's not being touched.
It's up in August of 29. August of 29.
So before we're done, the roof we're not scheduled for is gonna, I just wanted to check that. That's the question I have for right now.
The, so the, the warranty is one thing. The warranty will be up, so you definitely need to evaluate it at, by that 29 date. But doesn't mean it's going to fail at that point. You might be able to do some, some patchwork at that point, you know, have it evaluated. I don't believe that area is leaking, so.
Okay. I would be interested to hear just at some point the condition that the roofs are in. I have experience working in schools where we've pulled out trash cans in different places. And I know that's been places. I just would be wondering if that's happening, but yeah.
I, I think a, a good idea would probably to be, have a consultant come out and take a look at those and see exactly how long those are going to last, or if there's any issues currently. I'm sure you guys have had that done already, but that's probably my, my recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? But, Ms. Chanda?
Thank you for the presentation. I don't know if this is a question for admin or you guys, but is the reimagining of the library set in stone?
So in, in my opinion, none of this is set in stone right now. This is a concept that really needs to be designed through. So the general idea, I believe, is what we're trying to move forward. But we still have to go through a whole programming process, a schematic design process. And all of that is really going to define what the first project is. This is a general sense to really set a budget for a first project. And then we really have to go through that, that whole year-long process to design what the project is.
So I'm coming from a place of not wanting to get rid of the library because that is near and dear to my heart, and it's a school. And there are kids and families that can't afford to buy books, can't get to a bookstore, whatever the case might be. That feels like a resource being taken away.
Oh, so, so let's, can we clarify that for Devin? Because, because we're not, we're not removing the library. Actually, we're re-envisioning the library in terms of its future, so.
Yeah, thank you for that. If that was the perception, then I apologize. It's really, the intent here is to open up the library here so that the upper part of the library, the current library, becomes more of a common space. It may have some books and some soft seating areas that the library could use. But we're really trying to flip where the stacks are down to that lower space. And that would be an enclosed library. So you can have the library down low, the way it currently functions up on the higher level. But then the upper level is more of a, a, a commons area to support the other areas and students can use throughout the entire day.
Thank you. I was freaking out.
Ms. Alston?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. Just a question about the classrooms that are coming in the, in the first phase one, coming to the front. Just logistically, then where would the secure entrance and, and administrative space move? Or how would that work?
Sure, during construction, it's going to be a challenge. So we'll have to utilize one of the other entry points as the secure entry. So for that period of time, there's going to, it's going to be influx. But at the end of the day, at the end of the project, we're coming in through here. All of your admin moves here. So you do have that secure vestibule, secure entry at the end of the project. The admin moves from here over to here at that point. But during construction, it is, it is going to be a challenge.
Okay, so I was seeing that correctly. Okay. And yeah, I just want to make sure that there is like a vestibule for people to go and, you know, not a direct. Like, because I know it's, there's not a lot of vestibules in the, in the space, so that was my concern.
We would have to create one during.
Yeah, I mean, safety and security is going to be utmost importance. Obviously, we have, you know, Dr. Sergini, you're with a keen eye to that as we, as we move into this process. But by all means, that's going to be a priority as part of this. And I believe that a construction management firm will help, you know, create the, the guide rails for which students and staff will enter and exit as the project, you know, transforms.
Yeah, 100%.
Sorry, I just have one more question. And I only, I'm only asking just because it, it was mentioned during your presentation. So the pool in stage one is March 27 to August 28. And then you mentioned that the pool in, hmm, I, there was like a, it seemed like there was a gap where like you mentioned that the swimming season would end and then there would be an infill or something. I'm just want, like, if it's done by 28, would, does that make sense? I don't know if I'm answering.
Yeah, no, I, I totally understand your question.
Thank you.
I'm going to try to answer it, so.
I didn't ask it very well.
The new pool would be finished in August of 28. Let me go back to that slide. There you go. New pool, August of 28, right? The infill, because the swim season is done by about April. The infill is going to start April of 28, knowing that you'll have it for the start of the 28 season. Yeah, you got it. Take advantage of as much time as we can.
Ms. Pudle?
Thank you, thank you both. I, I have a few questions. I am going to start on. Give me a second. I believe on one of the slides, you mentioned that we won't need modulists at that point. So I believe it's on slide 15. No, not 15. 16.
Okay.
That we, we will not need modulators?
Yes.
Okay, so, but you never referenced the needing of modulators anywhere else, so.
Yeah, the intention here is that you don't need modulators at all.
At all, during any of these that's.
We're not disrupting any classrooms. The only classrooms we're disrupting is the B wing.
Okay.
Which we feel we can relocate somewhere in the existing building first. And then we build the classrooms first intentionally before we tear down any others.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Can you clarify what is meant on slide 18? Where this west wing renovations and new admin?
Sure. So the west wing is this area in orange. So the remaining part of the west wing, you know, that goes all the way down to the auditorium, all of this space gets renovated. So that's where your current administration is. That's going to move over to its new location and be converted to classroom spaces. And then those existing classrooms will be fully renovated with the unit ventilators pulled out, with the ceilings pulled out, with the flooring replaced, all the stuff that was required in that area. So you, essentially, you don't have to touch that area in future phases.
Okay. And that's new admin may need the high school admin.
High school admin, not district.
Just wanted to clarify. And then I do have, for the videos that you shared on those two slides, is it possible to have those put on the high school campus planning site?
I'm, I'm assuming we can get them exported out and we can put them up there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I'm wondering, when we're thinking about that, is there a way to kind of overlay the video? Maybe if not, if someone was to say I couldn't play the video for whatever reason, maybe they didn't have the capacity. Is there a way to do like a screen capture when you're playing and have it available as pictures?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
All right, thank you. And then I have, sorry, I, I wanted to go back to the roof. Just because I think on slide 23, when I saw critical roofing upgrades, right?
Yes.
I was under the impression that some type of roofing upgrade is happening. But then when you go to the last slide, not the last slide, but 28, where you talk about building envelope or roof windows, I think that's future projects. And then we just heard that in 2029, there's potential. So I'm guessing it's, it's the wording, my roofing upgrade versus roofing replacement, right? So what is included in, when we say critical roofing upgrade?
So what's included is that west wing, which we're doing a full renovation of, and the mid wing. And those are the D-rated roofs that you currently have on the, on the building, the worst condition. So we are proposing to replace those in project one. The rest of them, I believe, are B-rated, B-rated. So those are in fair, fair condition. So we're going to assess those as later projects. And we believe we can defer them until the time comes eight, 10 years down the road. And whether that's a replacement or a, you know, a refresh of it, it's kind of to, to be determined.
Okay. And then on that same slide, I'm just wondering, when we think about all the things that we're including in those, in the baseline scope of the project, and I think I wanted to confirm, are any of these things that, I guess, we can consider? We can defer or also meaning? And I think I asked the question because I was under the impression that when those parts of the building that may, and maybe it's not all parts of it, we are not doing, it's not new construction, right? So then my question was really, in thinking about the future, if future opportunity grants and funding is available and we are, we are doing some new construction to those parts. I was just thinking, is there anything here that when we're thinking about doing that, something that could wait? Or is this just based on your assessment to say, based on the timeline of when we will finish and potential timeline to start it, any other projects, these are the recommended?
Yeah, so these, you're on slide 23, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so these items are critical in order to get any of the work done for the new construction pieces. And if I said that wrong, please correct me.
Okay, that's fine. That was my understanding. I just wanted to clarify. And I think that, okay, I did have one more, I'm sorry. When we talk about outdoor transition on 29, what is that? So we address building, internal traffic flow, highway congestion, and outdoor transition?
I believe that is kids going outdoor in the mid wing. You'll have to tell me what that priority is, but that's my understanding. Or going through the courtyard out.
I believe it was the courtyard.
Okay.
Transition for like lunch and learn and, and to the, between the commons area and the cafeteria.
Okay.
And then can I just clarify in reference to the pool? The new pool with eight lanes and ADA improvement. Are we, is there eight lanes? Are we set as far as the eight lanes? Is that, or is there any other discussions in reference to the pool and the number of lanes?
From the very beginning, discussions of the pools, it's been eight lanes. The only other discussions was additional thought about using a bulkhead. And due to the cost, we've excluded that from this consideration.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. So the only thing that's different from this in reference to, it's just the elimination of the bulkhead, right?
Correct.
And then I will step back. I just had a quick question in reference to the auditorium. Can you confirm the seating capacity of that auditorium if you happen to have it?
I do, that's why I printed this out, so thank you. We are 675 seats.
Okay, that's it for me today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions to my left? To my right, Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I think I, I just want to clarify a couple of things. The outdoor transition on the priority list is actually the breezeway hallway outside from the, across the breezeway there. That will not be addressed through this plan because we're not touching that area of the building. So just to clarify, we pride high school currently in the 10-year plan. But if we do the assessment, we may identify something that could be added into the 10-year plan. Okay. And then I guess, I just had one other question about the chart on page, I want to say 12. It's the chart with the utilization square footage numbers?
Yes.
You don't have headers on the two columns. Could you just explain to us the difference between the middle column and the far right column?
Yes, so there's something called net square footage, which is everything that you program. So for instance, a classroom is 850 square feet. You add those up, that's all of your net square footage for the building. And you can see that here. The gross square footage includes everything like corridors, mechanical closets, toilet rooms, all the things that would not normally be programmed into a building. And that's why we typically add about 50% to that. So that's why you're seeing a larger gross square footage versus the net square footage.
Excellent, thank you. And I think the only other thing I had a question on was, I think when you were explaining the B wing demolition, I just wanted to clarify that it's, the way the schedule is written, the classrooms are March 27 to July of 28. And the B wing demolition is scheduled for July of 27 to August of 27?
Correct.
So the B wing demolition is actually gonna happen before the classrooms are fully constructed?
That's correct. That's why we're trying to utilize existing spaces. We'll find existing spaces to move some of those B wing classrooms into existing spaces that might be underutilized.
So one thing that might make this a little bit easier for, for me would be to see those phases on a simple chart. So each of the phases with the brief description and the timeline. Because I think we keep, we've talked about, and I know we're gonna talk about the financial assessment in a little bit, but we talk about the schedule and I think that it's, the construction portion of the schedule is really only three years of construction work in the building, around the building.
Sure.
And to be able to see that, and then that there's a year of site work after. But we also have, you know, essentially an 18 month timeframe upfront for design. So I, I just, I think it would be helpful for the rest of the board to be able to see what those timelines look like and when those things are gonna fall into place. We're gonna lose the pool at this time, we're gonna get the pool back at this time. The auditorium is gonna be there until the new auditorium is constructed and the new auditorium will be deployed. You know, whatever that timeframe looks like. Because I think those are the things that are important for us to be able to see that timeline. So if we could maybe add that in, that would be helpful.
We'll get that for you.
Sort of.
We tried.
It's sort of like what you have on, what slide is that, Jen? 20, it's sort of like that. I, I just, it's not as clear there because you have to keep flipping between the two pages to see the whole thing, so thanks.
Other questions, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Graff, for clarifying some of that. To just, to put a bow around it, I, I believe, for example, that we've replaced the gymnasium, maybe Doug knows, the gymnasium roof in the last 10 years. I remember distinctly that there was issues there. So I think for Ms. Thiel, when we look at it and say the roof, it's not one roof, it's Patrick roofs, being at different times. And I think there was a misunderstanding about what your question was because you were, I think it was interpreted as the mid wing roof, which is getting replaced, is that correct in the initial phase?
That's correct.
Right. So what I heard is there was no roofs left in slide 28 that are in white. There are risks in the next 10 years.
That was, that was my understanding as well.
Yeah, so I, I don't think Ms. Thiel took that, took away exactly the first time. So, so that roof that was questioned, that was gonna be out of, out of warranty, is going to be fixed in the first phase, which is the mid wing, which is where we're sitting above us. Yes. So it's, it is, yes. So I, I don't think that was clear. Okay, all right. And then also, just for simplicity for me, I don't know honestly what a chiller does. So, but if I'm sitting in the east wing and you're not replacing the ventilator for 10, 12 years, am I still in a lousy air conditioning room?
So your, your heating, your cooling is all done by boilers and chillers, makes the hot water, chill water pushes it around the building. The terminals, the unit ventilators on the, the right half of the building as we're looking at it there, those are gonna be existing to remain. What you're getting rid of is a majority of your unit ventilators because they're in that D wing portion that's getting taken out, but.
Okay, so when you, when you just ask it differently.
If you're specifically talking about that area, the answer is yes, those would stay until that second project.
But you're setting, you're, you're fixing the boiler room infrastructure. Does that fix the east wing's HVAC or it just prepares it to be fit?
It's the, it's the same system, so it's still gonna be the box in the corner of the room, but it gets rebalanced at the end of project one. So it'll be functioning correctly. So it's functioning as it would when it was initially installed.
Okay. Go ahead.
I want to try to ask a question on that. So the, the, the box that's, I was writing down what you said, the box in the corner of the room that remains in the classrooms. When I toured the building, and I, and quite frankly, I don't know which classrooms I was in, in which part of the buildings, but they were seriously very noisy. It sounded like a baby sound machine.
Yes.
Is, is that going to remain in the parts of the building that we are not addressing?
Yeah, I think, what was the quantity, 24? There are 24 rooms that would still have those in them. And that would be part of the next project. A majority of them are getting taken out and replaced as part of the renovation.
So 24 classrooms?
Yes, yeah. The, the trick with those is to replace those, to go with a different system. It, it turns into a bit of a renovation. You're bringing down ceilings, you're putting inducted systems. And when you're doing that, you're gonna wind up doing a lot of the renovations that can be deferred, so.
I, I think to your case, and when you, when you toured the buildings or when we all toured the buildings, in the West Wing, it was where we, we observed the loudest units, which are also the, the oldest units.
Just, it's just 24 classrooms. So I guess I'm wanting to know, you know, what those 24 classrooms are used for. I think I, I have, I have a problem with that. I just want the board to know that, that we're keeping students in a learning environment where I, where I'm struggling with how they're getting by. And we're gonna keep doing that for the next, I heard eight to 10 years and I heard 10 to 15. I was gonna ask you that question as well, in terms of the terminal units, which is what I understand the boxes to be, that you, okay.
They're unit ventilators.
Okay.
I know the, the name.
Is it eight to 10 years or is your report gonna say 10 to 15? What's your report gonna actually say?
10 to 15, I think was specifically for the chiller.
Okay.
Eight to 10 years is what I've seen as the target for the terminal equipment, which would include those unit ventilators.
Okay, and the other question is, because I'm not sure if you'll be here next week, when we do see your report, are there gonna be any limitations with regards to your opinions? You know, you're gonna give us an opinion to a reasonable degree of professional certainty on this? And is there gonna be limitations to that, like I didn't view, or I didn't see, or I would need to see, or I would need to still look? Is there gonna be anything like that in your report?
I mean, we're familiar with all the equipment that would be existing to remain. And, and like I said, those, the unit ventilators are what they are and you can replace the motors and you can replace the valves as service items. So we're taking care of the infrastructure as part of that first project and I, I felt good about that, so.
Thanks so much.
Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I, I think I just want to maybe clarify. One, you are a licensed professional engineer, correct?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Two, to Mr. Winters' question, will the condition, environment of those rooms that we are not doing any renovation to improve through this project?
They'll improve, they're not gonna improve dramatically. You'll have better control over those spaces through the balancing, but you're still using the same equipment in those rooms.
Right, so the equipment in the room will not change, but we are removing a whole portion of the building that will no longer be on the same system. It will have a new system.
Correct.
So the old system is only gonna operate half of the building that it used to operate the whole building.
The old infrastructure will do the new and the existing. The boiler and chiller plant, like Devin showed the slide before, the buildings at the end and right now are the same size. So the central boiler and chiller plants will do both sides of the building. It's the terminals and the way we're distributing the air and the systems that we're using to condition the, the spaces that'll change. So we're not using unit ventilators for the new construction, that's gonna be an overhead system. And eventually that would be the goal for the remainder of the building.
And then the other question, I guess, to Ms. Cleary's comment about 24 classrooms. Makes me wonder what the cost is per classroom to make those change outs. So if we decided at some point in the future, we want to put into our 10 year master facilities plan to make those changes sooner than 15 years out? We want to do it in six years or we want to do it? Could we get an idea of what that would cost us on a per classroom basis?
Yeah, I think we could do that because it's running off the same central plants. So you, you could renovate those rooms without doing comprehensive renovations of the entire area.
So you could do it like a room by room renovation?
From our perspective, yeah, I think we could put that together.
Only because I, I think Mr. Kenwood could potentially put that in like an annual maintenance plan so that every year we get a couple of them done or something to that effect.
And there, I don't want to speak too much on it, but there's other ways to do it. If you have this project, you can bid that as an alternate to the project too, where you can design it and when the bids come in, you can make the decision then, is it worth the money to, to spend and to get that done? So that's something, again, the central systems that we're using throughout the building are the same, so to pick off spaces like that are feasible.
Okay.
We, we do have the, you know, the $7.5 million of allowance that we have not identified projects for. So if this is a, a real concern of the board, we can easily slide some of those into the project. And like Jeff said, alternates are a great way to just control the cost.
I mean, I just think it's something that it would make everything, it would really be a step up improvement. So doing it as an alternate is definitely something then the board could decide whether or not it's worth the money to spend. Okay.
Other questions to my right? I'm sorry.
It looked like during the construction that we'd be losing parking. So have you assessed the, like, like the phasing plan as far as dealing with parking needs? Or could you talk a little bit more about that?
So we haven't yet and the, the videos and the sketches here are not gonna be accurate to what you're seeing there. Once the construction manager is in, is able to evaluate everything, that'll come into a clearer picture. But the intent is for that, if I can get this video to work, for that large area in the front of the building, probably some of that is gonna be staging and construction. But you could also probably fill some of that area with, with some parking, build one of those pieces of the lots a little bit earlier. You know, I don't think you're gonna need that entire space for the amount of additions that we're building. So I wouldn't take this as, as the final plan here. Certainly parking is gonna be constrained during this construction period, but we're gonna do everything we can to utilize every space on the site. You know, we still have tennis courts, we still have the space across the, and the church's lot to, to utilize potentially during construction.
And then just one other question. Concerning what we were, I guess, referring to the breezeway, it looks to me like currently there's no access to the breezeway from the library area, which will become the commons, correct? There's no way to get direct access. But I see in this post-design plan, there's, there's an access directly from the common area to the breezeway.
That is correct.
So I assume that's why we were saying we were addressing that.
So yeah, I, I guess the, the breezeway comment might be that you can't get from here to there without going outside or going upstairs. But you could easily use the courtyard as an easier path of travel to get from one side of the building. And that's really the intention is to start actually using that courtyard for, for more options, outdoor learning and circulation.
Right. Right, as I said, to, at least from what I'm not that familiar with the, that part of the building, but it looks as though there's access.
Yes.
Created that doesn't exist today.
100%.
From the common area, which, which is currently the library.
You're, you're absolutely correct. Or, or the intention is to add some doors, not only to the courtyard through here, but also from this corridor so you can access it quicker from the cafeteria space.
Any other questions to my right? To my left, any other questions, Ms. Perdue?
I know we breezed through this and maybe Ms. Steffi is gonna cover it. I was just looking at, and it's not labeled what slides they are, but they have some financials on there. Is that just because Ms. Steffi is gonna can't cover that or?
Yeah, the next agenda item has a 10 year budget forecast inclusive of the borrowing.
So would that, will what, she will cover, cover some of these details on here?
It won't cover the details on there, it'll cover the total.
The total.
Meaning, meaning the total amount and the draw schedule associated with the amount of money we need in a particular year.
Okay, can you just briefly, just summary? When looking at this slide, how are we supposed to understand it? I'm just thinking this like it's coded green and then on the subsequent follow slide is blue. And I'm just trying to figure out how, what is the understanding or the takeaway from this?
So this whole estimate was provided by CHA, so I don't want to comment too much on it. But essentially, it's showing a breakdown of all the individual areas. You can see there's an item for general construction in the renovation portion of the building. There's an item down here for the natatorium. So you can see the total for the natatorium. And then he's got a cost for classroom additions and I can't read what that says, demolition and site improvements. So he's just breaking it down into different categories based on the, the phase of the construction. And then in the blue, those are all soft costs.
And then the future projects column is reflecting everything else that we have listed as on the previous slide or one of the, okay.
Correct.
I just, that's all I was looking for, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions to my left? All right. Jeff and Devin, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For the presentation this evening. Ms. Steffi, we are now moving on to the 10 year budget forecast inclusive of the capital borrowing. Again, just to kind of prepare you for her presentation, you have a, a handout at your, at your side. The, the 10 year forecast was reviewed this month at the finance committee of the board. And we are presenting it as, as presented earlier, earlier this month.
Okay. High school renovation borrowing assumptions based on draw schedules? Thank you. The first time I presented the $180 million borrowing scenario, several assumptions were used. I'm not going to review all of the assumptions again, but the assumptions were reviewed at the finance committee last week and committee members agreed that the assumption used in the projections were conservative. Slide three. This slide details several pieces of information. The borrowing of $180 million over 10 years, which has not changed since the May presentation. The draw schedule for the 10 year master facilities plan, based on the September 2025 presentation. And the next line is the potential draw for the high school renovation project. The two added together give us the anticipated year end spend. The remaining bond funds, accounting for funds remaining at the end of the prior fiscal year, new borrowing and draws for both the 10 year master facilities plan as well as the high school project. Starting with year 2526, we recently borrowed our first $15 million. We anticipate spending around $5.5 million on the 10 year master facility plan projects and $2.7 million on the high school renovation schematic design and design development for a total of $8.3 million anticipated spend for the 2526 school year, leaving around $6.7 million of bond funds remaining at the end of the current fiscal year. In 2627, we anticipate borrowing $35 million with a $4.3 million draw for the 10 year master facilities plan and a $12.6 million draw for the high school project. For an anticipated spend of $17 million and remaining bond funds of $24.6 million, you can follow the same logic through the chart to year 10. In years six, eight and nine, there's no projected borrowing. Debt service payments increase significantly these three years and any additional borrowing would add increased strain to the budget. Year 10 is the final phase of borrowing and it is this year we see our debt service payments reach $13.6 million. And this is where debt service payments remain until the year 2059. The schedule does suggest that if we borrow $180 million, there will be $7.7 million remaining at the end of year 10. The borrowing schedule is fluid and we would evaluate the need for borrowing each year. If we continue to build. If we continue to build capacity in our budget, theoretically, there will be room for additional borrowing beyond the 203435 year. You can see by the schedule that $113 million high school renovation project, as well as the projects detailed in the 10-year master facilities plan, are financially achievable based on the current assumptions, borrowing schedule, and draw schedule. Slide four is the debt payment schedule you are all familiar with. This schedule details the borrowing of $180 million over 10 years and the yearly payments associated with that borrow. Jumping to slide five. Slide five focuses on a 10-year segment of that schedule. I wanted to highlight a few things here. The first is that you will see debt service payments don't work like your typical mortgage payment. Debt, debt payments will fluctuate. Take, for instance, the projected issuance of $35 million debt in the year 2526. Payments start at $511,000, increase to $3 million, fall down to $1.6 million, then increase to $2.1 million. The increase up to $3 million is because there's existing debt that falls off at that point. This is called debt wrapping, and this is done to help manage annual debt by keeping payments steady in an effort to avoid large spikes. In year six, 203031, I discussed how there is no additional borrowing projected. This is because debt service payments increased from $10.8 million in 2930 to $11.7 million in year 3031, and any additional debt would put increased strain on the budget. Moving to years eight and nine, 3233 and 3334, debt payments increased a total of $1.6 million. And again, any additional borrowing in those years would put an increased strain on the budget. Overall, the schedule shows the importance of carefully timing and managing future borrowing to maintain fiscal stability. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Steffi. Are there questions from members of the board to my right? Ms. Graff?
So I just want to say thank you, because this is exactly what I was looking for at finance. And I think that this 10-year projection model explains so much more clearly, like, how this has to be folded in over time. I do have one question, and I don't know if you know the answer, and it's fine if you need to get back to me. But my question is, I was, I was just at the leadership conference for PSBA, and one of the things a lot of other districts talked about was delaying projects and borrowing in advance. So borrowing over a period of two, three, four years before they started a project in order to be able to fund the project. Have, could you give me any information related to like whether that is or should have been something that we should look at?
As far as I know, 85% of the funds have to be spent in three years, so I'm not sure that that's something that we would be able to do, but if that's something, information that you were, were given, I'll look into it.
I, I just, I noticed that there were a couple of districts that were talking about their construction projects, and they did a very slow roll starting of them in order to sort of build some capital upfront. And I, I was under the impression as well that you had three-year timeframe. But yeah, if you could take a quick look.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions to my right? Seeing none to my left. Ms. Thiel?
Thank you very much. This is really clear to understand. And I just wanted to ask a question. Does this borrowing schedule assume the Act One index, raising to the Act One index?
Yes, it assumes raising to the Act One index all 10 years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Cleary?
Could you expand on that a little bit more? So if the, what I heard today was that the, the construction project as a whole is about four to five years, so 20, 29, 202030, so that's five. And you're saying we would still have to tax the public at the Act One index for 10 years. Can you sort of explain why that's?
Sure. I explained debt wrapping. So just because we're borrowing in the first five years or six years for the high school project doesn't necessarily mean that those payments are going to be largest in the first five or six years.
Okay, and then over that 10-year span, are we going to be generating a surplus every year at the end of 10 years? How's that, how's that going to work?
So the 10-year financial model projects a $2.1 million deficit over the 10 years, and there are several ways that we could address the deficit. We could use unallocated fund balance, which right now stands about $9.8 million. We can use fund balance from the Capital Projects Fund, which at the end of the year stood about $10.6 million. There's possible proceeds from the sale of auto bond. The operational deficits don't start until 2930, and it is our hope to balance a budget every year without the use of fund balance, so we will continue to look for operational efficiencies.
Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I, I just want to follow up on the $2.5 million deficit.
Two, two point one.
Two point one. I'm sorry, two point one. Thanks for the clarification. And is that, I guess what I'm asking is, where does that show up in my chart?
That doesn't show up in that chart, so that was presented previously during the high school, when I did the presentation on the four different high school borrowing scenarios.
So I, I guess what I'm saying is, when I look at this chart, if I understand it correctly, the new debt projected, and we have the anticipated year-end spend, and then we have the remaining bond funds. So that, that row at the bottom is essentially how much bond fund money we have left at the end of that year. And in each year, it's a positive number.
Correct.
So how do we have a $2.1 million deficit?
Because, show on the chart here, like, here is what's going into the operating budget, so these numbers here, so like this year's 20323334, you see that increase of $1.6 million, so that, that piece is affecting your general fund budget.
So it's our operational budget that will be experiencing a deficit. We're not going to experience a deficit based on any borrowing we're doing over this 10-year period.
Correct.
So the borrowing actually is showing that we're going to have a surplus. Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Ms. Thiel?
I'm so sorry. Thank you for your patience and my questions. So I just want to make sure I understand something. So the presentation, the last time for financing, the high school project for Warm, Safe, Dry, and I might, I, I'm just remembering a number of around $122 million. That's what's standing out in my brain-ish. And today, the estimated cost with $7 million of, of buffer was $113 million. So has that made its way into this presentation?
So the $121 million was before we had a draw schedule. So essentially that $120 million, the $7 million is the 121 less the 13.
Oh, thank you.
I can explain it a little bit further if you want. Yeah, so the last month when I gave the presentation on the borrowing, we didn't have a draw schedule. So basically, I took the $180 million, backed out the capital facility projects, and that gave me a number that we were able to spend on, on the renovation for the high school. That number totaled $121 million.
Yes, I, I agree. I understand what you're saying now. I think what Ms. Thiel was commenting on was, in the 1A project, which was the base scope, I think it came in at 102, 102 million, 105 million?
109 million.
109 million? Right, baseline. So that baseline scope of $109 million is not the same, because we've now taken out all of the portions of the building that are newer are not going to get the baseline scope upgrades. So there's a portion of that budget or that expenditure that is, has gone away. Does that, so that base, what we would have called baseline scope, the dollar value of that cost is now less, because we're not going to do any of that work in the east wing of the building. So I think that we had asked in property for that differential and to get a cost estimate of the differential between the original baseline scope at whatever, 109, 110, and what the baseline scope is now. And I want to say there was about a, Glenn, do you remember? $60 million differential, $50 million? So it was about $50 million had come out of that baseline scope cost by not doing that baseline scope work in everything that was shown in white on the slide. Does that? So all of that work not being done, there's no upgrades to bathrooms, there's no unit ventilators being removed, there's no lighting, there's no fixtures, there's no finishes, there's nothing, no flooring, nothing is being done in that area of the building. That saved $50 million. That $50 million then is getting spent in other things like new classroom wing and auditorium that were not in that baseline scope. So there's like a swapping out of spend, if that makes sense.
Any other questions for Ms. Steffi? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Steffi. Agenda, Madam President, we have the owner's representative recommendation. Dr. Sergini and Mr. Kenwood are here.
You know, I just want to, because this matter would be going forward to a vote for next week, I do feel like I want to get some clarification of where we are, where we fall, what our thoughts are, because I know that it's a quick situation of where we're voting for, for next week. So I do think it's important for us to give the architects and our financial outlook, where, where our gut feels, what do we feel like? So yeah, Ms. Shonda.
I'm sorry that I didn't ask this earlier. With the assumption that we're raising the taxes to Act One over the 10 years, every 10, every year, the same board is not going to be at the table. So what is the, what are the plans or the contingency plans, or what happens if there is a board that says, we're not raising taxes two years from now? What happens to the high school project?
So I think it's important to recognize that in Ms. Steffi's presentation, one of the assumptions was that the Act One index was, was calculated to its maximum on each of the years. Every year, the, the board of school directors will have to adopt a budget, and in those budget adoptions, you will have to make decisions on whether or not to fund certain things or, or not fund certain things. If, in fact, you begin this process and you start, you know, taking bonds for 30-some million dollars and so forth to start constructing a school, you know, within five years, you know, future boards will have to make decisions about, you know, they have a bill for the, the paying interest and principal on the loan, and they'll have to make decisions on, on a number of things, on programs, staffing, taxation, all that. So they'll make the, the common decisions that we would make on a, on a regular annual basis that, that you've been a part of.
I would think, I mean, not to, to add on to that, but that is truly what you're, you're thinking of right now, is that we have to, as a community, as a district, be committed to know that this is the expectation of it, to be honest with you. And I think that's the pulse of the board, is do we have this focus, this motivation to invest in our community, ask the community to invest in this school district, based on the needs that we've identified for our district, and elevate our school district to be compared to those, our neighboring districts? So I think that's really what we have to come down to is our, where's our commitment going to be? Because I, the assumption is that that, to me, is that's what's going to happen, and we're going to be asking our community, our stakeholders, to invest in this as well.
Well, I think, I think you're right, Ms. Cancro, and I think Ms. Thiel was maybe getting to this point even earlier, as, as so was Ms. Graff. You're going to need, make an investment at some point. And so the question is, what type of investment are you going to make? Are you going to create a, you know, a, a cost that, that's associated with things you can't see, touch, or feel? And I don't know if that's, you know, the approach you want to take based on the priorities that you've outlined. So we're going to need to do something. How we do it is going to be dependent upon your decision here and, and over the next several months. Again, this decision that we're asking you to do is to move into schematic design phase to allow the design team and our, our future construction management team to further develop the concept and further develop the costs associated with it and, and the, and the transitions as a part of that. Ms. Perdue?
So I think, Ms. Cancro, you bring up a good point, and I just wanted to make sure just because, so for next week, the ask is going to be what is on the agenda? And can I just get, can we just review that and just make sure I am understanding? Because there's two here, right? We have Schrader Group and ICS. I just want to make sure that is clear on what that ask will be. I'm sorry, Ms. Sergini.
We know the Schrader Group is our architect of record, and it is in our next presentation a recommendation on our construction management firm. So that'll be, that's forthcoming here. But are you asking for something other than, than that?
No, I'm asking because there's two items, there's two items on the agenda for, under 13D, right?
Right. And with the assumption that ICS is approved earlier in the agenda next week, they would then be approved, an assumption, assuming that we would take up the motions under 13D, we would then approve both the Schrader Group and the recommended firm ICS to move, as the design team, to move into the schematic design phase, which is approximately two to three months of, of a period.
Yeah, I jumped in too soon. I know that they had a present. I just really kind of wanted the pulse of where everyone was, but I know Dr. Sergini will explain ICS on that part, so you could, if you wanted to.
So my question is not about ICS. My question is that we have a motion on, on the agenda, maybe that will come and that will be clear. There's two items. There's an, an amount for design, schematic design phase for the Methaclean High School renovation concept, right? And then there's also another amount for ICS. So I wanted to get an understanding of what are the two motions and what are the difference? And maybe that's what's going to come next, but I just want to make sure that it will be presented.
That's a fair, that's a fair question, Devin. If I may ask, can we, can we educate the board, again, on schematic design and what that process looks like? And what the, what, what comes from both the construction management side of the House generally and what comes from the architectural side?
Yeah, so, thank you.
Ms. Perdue, is your question the fact that both of these motions are worded exactly the same? That both are saying we're going to proceed into schematic design? I think what we'd like you to explain is how the construction management team, ICS, if we move forward and approve that, is different from Schrader Group as our architecture firm.
Sure.
And the, the two scopes are different and working together, but how our construction management team is not necessarily doing schematic design?
They're not doing the design. Our team is doing the design. We're doing all the land development beginnings of the approval process, all the mechanical, electrical engineering. It's, it's essentially what we just did with the new construction option. We took that through a schematic design, so at the end of the day, you see what that option is. You, you remember the videos that we did for that part of the project. We'll do the same thing. ICS would essentially be what CHA was during that process. They'll be, you know, following along with all of our meetings. They'll be doing some cost estimating, they'll be guiding the process with their knowledge, but a large, you can see the difference there. A large part of our job is, is schematic design to develop the, the program and the plans, and they'll be helping us with constructability and cost estimating.
So I think maybe the motion needs to be revised.
That's, that's fine.
The motion talks about going into the phase, schematic design phase. Is, is there a different motion that you would recommend?
I think they're both fine for schematic design phase, and then the next phase is design development for both of us.
Right. It's, it's what we've done.
Could we let Ms. Perdue finish talking, because she got cut off like three times?
Thank you.
It doesn't even matter. That's fine. It doesn't even matter. That's fine. You can proceed because that's fine.
So Ms. Cancrow, prior to introducing Dr. Sergini and Mr. Kenwood, you were trying to get a pulse. Do you still want to do that?
Why don't we go ahead and have you present, and then we could talk about everything all together as one, so that we, I apologize for that.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Tonight, Director of Facilities, Mr. Doug Kenwood, and I are presenting a recommendation for the district's construction management and owner's representative, or commonly referred to by the acronym CMOR, services, in support of our ongoing and upcoming capital improvement projects. With the contract with our current CMOR provider coming to a close at the end of October, the district felt it prudent to enter into a process, a comprehensive process, to select a CMOR moving forward. So we started that in September with a request for proposal, or RFP, that went out. And to that RFP, six firms responded, indicating that they were interested in moving forward as our CMOR. The proposals were reviewed internally, and based on rubric scoring, three firms were chosen for in-person interviews that took place on October 1st. Last week, we informed the property committee on October 14th that we would be making a recommendation for a firm at the work session of the board, and that brings us to this evening. And pending board approval that would take place next week on the 28th, the CMOR firm would begin their services on November 1st of this year. So it is recommended that the Board of School Directors award the CMOR contract to the firm ICS CMTA out of Media, Pennsylvania. This recommendation covers what we've been referring to as both Scope A and Scope B. Scope A includes the monthly retainer services for CMOR services, and also the master facilities plan projects that Mr. Kenwood and I have presented on, and that have been a topic of conversation here. And then also Scope B, which is the upcoming work associated with the future high school project. So the recommendation that appears on the agenda this evening for your consideration next month, or next week, rather, is to approve ICS CMTA of Media PA to serve as construction management owner's representative for Methacton High School project, which, as an aside, is Scope B, and master facilities plan projects, Scope A, as presented pending review of contract by the solicitor. And the draft contract has been provided to Mr. Summers, our solicitor, and he is currently in the process of reviewing that, and he will be providing feedback. The slide that you see in front of you now looks at the fee structure associated with ICS CMTA. Their pricing is competitive and presents a cost advantage when compared with other firms in all three areas impacted by this process: the monthly retainer, the master facilities plan projects, and also the high school project that is upcoming. The structure allows us to scale support based on need, helping us to manage our costs while maintaining continuity of service. And it's important to note that these efficiencies were a key factor in our evaluation. Specifically, there are cost savings associated to the district with all three of these areas. They total $700 a month in retainer services, anywhere from a half a percent up to a one and a half percent on the master facilities plan projects, depending upon their overall cost, and $261,000 on the high school project. In reviewing the proposals and conducting interviews, it was apparent that all firms demonstrated the required capabilities to perform CMOR services. However, ICS CMTA distinguished themselves in the following areas: their fee structure provides savings for both Scope A and Scope B; their personnel team brings significant experience with K-12 school construction, which is vital to our success; some of their current school district customers or clients include Coatsville, Abington, Potts Grove, and Colonial; lastly, and importantly, they showed the bandwidth and team depth to commit the time and resources necessary to support the needs of Methacton School District. To conclude, it is recommended that the board approve ICS CMTA to provide construction management owner's representative services for Methacton School District. This recommendation reflects a balance of experience, responsiveness, and financial efficiency, and positions us well for the successful execution of our capital projects.
Thank you, Mr. Kenwood. Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Other questions from members of the board to my right? Seeing none. To my left, Ms. Austin.
Yeah, thank you. My only question is about the person that, who would be working with us. Is it, I know that when we, generally when we hire, that, you know, we sort of get a bio, there's a certain dedicated person for our team. So is it the case also with this firm?
That is the case. Mr. Kenwood and I have met with them extensively. We're also aware of their reputation in the field, and that is something that we can get to you as well.
Okay, yeah, if you could add that before the next meeting, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I think, Dr. Sergini, we plan to have them here at the meeting next week?
Yes, Doctors, that's correct. They will be here.
Is there anything else that we need aside from the bio of those people and an updated, finalized contract from the solicitor?
Certainly.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Sergini and Mr. Kenwood? Seeing none. Thank you, gentlemen. Madam President, that ends the guests and scheduled speakers' presentations for this evening.
All right. Any other comments or question on today's presentation, or concerns, or Seeing none.
Ms. Cancrow, I guess, I think it probably just makes sense to talk about what you were asking for feedback related to 13D and get clarification from Ms. Perdue at that point, when we get to that item, when we walk through the...
Okay, thank you. Fantastic.
Next week, we'll go into the reports. We'll go into the public comment, and then we'll move on to fiscal items. Ms. Steffi?
There are seven fiscal items on the agenda for review. 9A, list of bills. 9B, treasurer's report. 9C, budgetary transfers. 9D, Skyview roofing proposal. Approve Mark J. Sobak Roofing Consulting of Luzern, PA, to complete the design phase for the 2026 Skyview Roof Replacement Project at a total cost of $20,684, which includes $3,288 for infrared scanning services. 9E, Contract Child Guidance Resource Center. Approve the referral agreement with Child Guidance Resource Centers of Havertown, PA, for behavioral health and educational services as listed, beginning November 1st, 2025, through October 31st, 2030, to provide as-needed services to students on a case-by-case basis. 9F, Contract Child and Family Focus. Approve the referral agreement with Child and Family Focus Incorporated of Autobahn, PA, for mental and behavioral health services as listed, beginning November 1st, 2025, through October 31st, 2027, to provide as-needed in-home student-family-based mental and behavioral health services to students on a case-by-case basis. 9G, Construction Manager Owner's Representative. Approve ICS CMTA of Media, PA, to serve as construction manager owner's representative for Methacton High School project and master facilities plan projects as presented pending review of contract by the solicitor.
Thank you, Ms. Steffi. Were there any questions on fiscal items? Ms. Clary?
Are 9E and 9F being currently reviewed by the solicitor? Or do they get reviewed by the solicitor?
They did. They were reviewed by our special ed council.
Thank you.
Any other questions to my right? To my left? Seeing no other questions. Thank you, Ms. Steffi. On personnel items, Dr. Sergini.
Dr. Sergi, can I just ask a question? I just, it's under your, it's under advisement, but it is a personnel matter. Could we...
We'll have Dr. Sergini.
Okay, I wasn't sure where that was going to go. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
And Madam President, just reflect the minutes that at, I don't know what time it is.
9:02, Ms. Perdue had to dismiss herself.
I left the meeting. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Sergini, personnel items.
Thank you, Doctors Irby. The following items are up for consideration by the board this month. I will start with the item that was just referenced on the superintendent's advisements. That is Ms. Michaela Whitehouse for the position of belonging and climate facilitator. After the change in job description, the position was reposted. Upon review of applications that were submitted, candidates were brought forward to two rounds of in-person interviews. The second round of interviews included stakeholder members of the Board of School Directors and also community members. And from that process, Ms. Whitehouse is the recommended candidate. Ms. Michaela Whitehouse is currently a teacher of 9th and 10th grade English at Methacton High School, where she has served as a member of the MTSS team, a pilot teacher for the Character Strong program, and the first coach of the esports team. Prior to joining the Methacton family, Ms. Whitehouse served as a teacher of 8th grade, excuse me, 8th grade communication arts at Hazel I. Jackson Middle School in the school district of Lancaster, where she was also a member of the MTSS and PBIS teams, created and facilitated a student council, and delivered professional development to staff in restorative practices. Academically, Ms. Whitehouse has a bachelor's degree in English secondary education from Millersville University, and she is very excited to begin the work of this position, and we look forward to her leadership in this role. Moving on back to the personnel agenda, three resignations classified. There are two paraprofessionals, Alexis Cozy and Parvati Simasami. We thank Alexis and Parvati for their service to Methacton, and we wish them well. There's also one resignation for retirement, Thomas Davis, custodian at Arrowhead. After 12 years of dedicated service to Methacton School District, with unwavering commitment and pride in his work, Thomas helped create a clean, safe, and welcoming environment for our students and our staff each day. We extend our heartfelt gratitude to Tom, and we offer him the best wishes of the Methacton family in his upcoming retirement. There is one employment administrator, Dr. Brooke E. Bergy, for the position of supervisor of secondary education. Dr. Bergy brings with her 18 years of educational experience, including 14 years as a secondary English teacher and four years as an instructional coach, where she supported more than 250 teachers across grades 6 through 12. Her expertise includes instructional design, curriculum alignment, professional development, and technology integration, all grounded in a deep understanding of research-based pedagogy and student-centered learning. She's been a key member of a K-12 Curriculum Redesign Committee, has led numerous professional learning workshops, served as a district manager for the Canvas Learning Platform as well. Her background also includes leadership in Act 158, alternate pathways to graduation, as well as implementation of and instructional coaching. Academically, Dr. Bergy earned her Doctor of Education in PK-12 Educational Leadership from Gwendolyn Mercy University. She also holds a Master's Degree in Curriculum and Instruction from Wilkes University, and a Bachelor of Science in Secondary Education English from Temple. Dr. Bergy's previous roles include work in the Penridge School District, Commonwealth Charter Academy, and most recently with the Upper Perkyomen School District, where she has supported curriculum, instruction, and education development at the middle school level. With her proven leadership, instructional expertise, and commitment to academic excellence, Dr. Bergy is exceptionally well-prepared to serve the Methacton School District in this position. There is also one change of status administrative, Mr. John Hudsonger, for the position of Assistant Principal of Arcola Intermediate School. Mr. Hudsonger brings to this role 29 years of dedicated service as a health and physical education teacher in the Methacton School District, with experience at both the elementary and middle school levels. At Arcola, he has long served as a curriculum coordinator, a mentor to new and student teachers, and a trusted leader among staff. His commitment to student development, instructional excellence, and school-wide collaboration is well-established and deeply respected. He holds a Bachelor of Science in Health and Physical Education from Temple University, a Master's in Education from Gratz College, and his principal certification from Cabrini College. John is also an adjunct professor, teaching graduate-level coursework focused on classroom management and instructional strategies. Beyond the school walls, Mr. Hudsonger has served his community for 36 years as a volunteer firefighter, including 23 years as deputy fire chief, where he has led in crisis management, emergency response, and public safety education. With his deep roots in Methacton and a strong commitment to students and staff, and exceptional leadership capacity, we are proud to recommend Mr. Hudsonger for this important administrative role. There are three uncompensated leaves: professional Devon Thomas, Special Education Instructor at Worcester, and Laura Poncello and Rivka Milrod, both 3rd grade instructors at Eagleville, all for the dates listed. Supplemental contracts for English Support, Community Cares, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and Pupil Services Department, as well as coaches, and the addition of Peter Bruni to the classified substitute list as a custodial casual on-call. We welcome Peter. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Questions to my left? Ms. Austin?
Thank you. Just one quick one on 10J1, the Special Education Instructor at Worcester. Do we have someone, is that going to a long-term sub or sub, or do we have someone lined up to take, especially because it's special ed?
Certainly. We currently have someone in the position, and that person has been there since the beginning of the year and will remain through that period.
Anything else to my left? Seeing none. To my right, questions? Ms. Graff?
10M5, can you provide some information around that scope?
There are multiple items under the pupil services contract. They include IEP writing, service as a personal care assistant for Unified Sports, homebound instruction, and GIEP writing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions to my right? Seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Next on the agenda, we have curriculum and program items. Dr. Regina?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Irby. Just two items here for curriculum and programs. Both are programs we have discussed previously, looking for the approval of the Data Science, which is a one-year credit course at Methacton High School to begin the 26-27 school year. And the revised curriculum documents will be something that we'll be looking to process and get approved this spring. Also is cybersecurity, which is a .5 credit course for the high school, also beginning the 26-27 school year. And we'll be piloting both of these this spring, as we're reviewing the curriculum documents as well for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Regina. Any questions to my left? Seeing none. To my right, Ms. Clary?
Dr. Regina, is that how it normally works when we create, when we've got new, you know, programs that we, new classes that we want to roll out, that we pilot them without the board having looked at the actual curriculum? Is that how it normally works?
The plan from Schrader Group is impressive. It delivers a lot of what was on our wish list. And I do have to say, given the number of times we've changed and the number of times we've changed budget, I'm impressed with the work and the patience. I know that they're being paid, but still, that was on us, and I realize that. What I was trying to flush out with my questions today was the financing a little bit more, because I do still have concerns, and I believe I've shared these concerns repeatedly with many people, with many of the board members. So I'll just repeat them quickly. It's a beautiful building, and when it comes to the cost and the assumption of raising to the Act One index, I just, I have concerns, and I don't want our academic programming. I don't want us to have beautiful buildings but have academic programming, including special education delivery. That doesn't match the building they're in. And right now, I'm not necessarily seeing that there's improvement in all areas, and I struggle to look people in the face knowing that we're raising taxes to the Act One index, knowing that there are many families in our district who are not experiencing the education that matches that tax raise. And that's where I'm at. So some of my questions around understanding the needs is trying to clarify, because I had understood the 113 million that was priced for this renovation. I thought that the 7 million was actually in that 113 million, so that was in the buffer, not the differential between the 113 million to 122 million. So that was a clarifying point for me there when it came to the raising and the borrowing in the Act One index. I also do still have questions that I'd love to know that the... that the future projects identified with the high school, if those are factored into a master facilities plan or if there's plan to put them in somewhere, where they might fall. So that is a concern that I have. But really, at the end of the day, and, you know, we do have to make a decision. I also absolutely realize that. The pool needs to be addressed. There are areas of the high school that we need to be addressed. I have an additional concern that if we're not touching parts of the building, that guests are totally fine, or will be fine. The high school planning committee and project spent years selling to the public that the high school needed to be replaced. So I think there will need to be some considerable communication that, no, these areas that really aren't touched are totally fine. That will, because that will need to be rebuilt, that trust will need to be rebuilt to the community. Because, I mean, it's years before I was elected onto the board that that project was underway. And I think that that needs to be realized. So those are my concerns. I just want to make sure that if we are, like, it's hard to raise taxes when you know that there are community members who are not receiving the education that matches that tax raise. So that's where I'm at.
Any other comments? Ms. Kang?
Just for clarification, the $113 million for the building includes a $7 million buffer for additional things that are unforeseen. So it's $113 million. As Devon, maybe you want to step up just for clarification, if you don't mind? Because there was $7 million being thrown around, and then there was $7 million in the borrowing at the end. So there's seven repeated, but if you could clarify.
Happy to clarify. So the $113 million includes $7.5 million, and really, when you add in escalation and everything else, it's almost $10 million. Of that $113 million will be assigned to projects that we could pull in from the baseline scope. So when we started talking about the unit ventilators that might need to be pulled into Project 1, we can use that $7.5 million to do those things.
So please, again, kind of dumb. The $113 million, there's a $7 million buffer to get up to the Thunder 13? Or here's the max we can borrow, and there's the $7? Does that?
Yeah, $113 includes the $7.5, so you won't go above the $113.
Thank you for the visual. That's really helpful.
My thing is, I completely agree with you. Education is our forefront concern. I think when it comes to the borrowing of this high school, I do want to share that I think this meets, when we met with the community, I sat in there with them too, and I agree. It's been like two years coming of communication. The amount of things that were covered, that we were able, we can achieve through this design is phenomenal. I really think it, I think it's important that we look back in that community when we go through the schematics so that they can see that their concerns, their feedback was provided. Because they were really great in getting involved. So I do think that they would be pleased with what you've come up with on that end. I would say that I do feel confident going forward with the next phase, because I do think we were going to go through schematics. At any point after that, we can always have a decision factor to change again. Not that that's what I would want to see for the future of Methacton, but I did want to say that I am okay going forward with this next phase for all that's on here.
Are there any other comments on the matter of 13D at this time? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I did want to respond to Ms. Thiel's request about the deferral of the other, the deferred projects. So those deferred projects are currently not in the master facilities plan because it's a 10-year plan, and they're being deferred outside the 10-year window. So they're currently not included in the plan and could be rolled in as they are identified as future projects. We definitely would want to look at the engineer's report to see what those timing, the timing of those projects would be, and then see how that lays into a plan. We used to have a 13-year master facilities plan, and it just became obvious with working with the engineering team that it was not helpful, because that far out was really hard to, looking at the escalation and stuff, it became really complicated. So we brought it back to a 10-year plan. I have asked for some additional information related to current utilization of the high school and sort of a justification of the size of this classroom wing, and also information related to deferring those projects. And so I feel like what was presented tonight gave me a lot of the information I was looking for. I also just want to point out, moving into schematic design allows us to define the project in a way and identify potential alternatives. So it doesn't necessarily mean we are going to build a $113 million project and tax at the Act 1 index for the next 10 years. It means we're going to get a design that has the components that we've talked about with the design that was put forward, but we could still choose to remove pieces or adjust things, like the classroom wing could get smaller, or the auditorium could get removed from the project, or the pool could go to a six-lane pool, or lots of things could happen between now and the final design. And I just want to point that out, because I think this is a step in a process. It's not a commitment to raise taxes for the next 10 years at the Act 1 index. It does, we have done the analysis that it's financially feasible with those caveats. I just, I don't want to mix up what we're actually voting on next week. And so I have the information I need to move forward.
Ms. Graff, I must say, that was well said. That's exactly what we're voting on. We're voting on the next step of a process. So thank you for sharing that. Any other comments at this point? Ms. Austin?
Yeah, thank you. I just, I want to say, I also am comfortable with this next vote, just because I really appreciate Schrader Group taking the time to really listen to our input of what we really wanted and taking really a fresh approach to doing it by area versus doing it, like looking at what we can do overall. So it's making it work for the district. And like that combined with also the more specific financial information we got, such as the debt repayment schedule, it allows me to be comfortable with this, because I really do think it is, it is needed. We need to move forward with this. We've been talking about it for a long time. And I don't think, I think we are all in agreement. Something has to be done. And we've put in a lot of work and a lot of time to get here. So just thank you to all of our partners to get us here, and those are my thoughts on that.
Any final comments from anyone at this point? Seeing none. Madam President, I'm going to turn it over to you for dates, board members' calendars.
As you can see, dates for board members' calendars is listed as below. Anything for old or new business? Yes, Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I think we need to congratulate our field hockey team for winning the pack this year. Just FYI. So I think we definitely need to make a note of that.
I just wanted to note that Ms. Thiel will be excusing herself at 9:26 PM. Any other new or old business to share? All right. Seeing none. I hope everyone does wear their orange tomorrow, whether you're in the schools or in your own personal careers. I think it's a fantastic thing to see everybody come together on Unity Day tomorrow. So I wanted to add that. Next, we'll move to courtesy of the floor. The Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comment on matters that are maybe before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of comments, and please submit questions via email at information@methacton.org.
Jim Malik, Worcester. Jen, what did you mean when you said the vote next week is a quick situation? What does that mean? A quick situation? Everything's quick about this. The vote's quick. Everything's quick. How's about you saying, asking the community to invest in this school district? We have no choice, Jen. We don't invest. We pay taxes. And if you don't pay your taxes, they take your house. That's how it works. We're not like investors. We're basically servants to you guys. So, but are you saying that I have a choice? If I, can I choose not to invest? That's not how it works. You know it doesn't work that way. The repackaging's not cutting it. And you talked about meeting with the community in the committee? You didn't meet with the community, teachers, parents, students, administrators? They're like one quarter of what the community is. You didn't meet with the taxpayers. You met with all the self-interested people. So I don't know what you're talking about. For clarity, this is a $250 million project. It's not $113. You just add the interest in. Your priorities are a wish list that were generated by students, teachers, parents, administrators, and board members, all who had a special interest in the project. And then you turned them into goals and priorities, this wish list, and now the goal is to address all the priorities. So who came up with that? Why was that decision made to address every single priority, wish list? Oh, some of these priorities, what, lunch and learn, apartment program, school store, fitness center, convenience of traffic flow? There's nothing essential about any of it. And there's nothing essential about HVAC, from what I just heard from your expert. Sounds like a good guy. He knows what he's talking about. So you never really needed a new HVAC system anyway. So the whole thing is a sham, in my opinion. Now, it seems to me the driver of this whole thing is your architect. Now, he's getting $600K for a design phase. What's he going to get after the design phase and through construction of the project? Is he going to get a percentage? Because the other contract was on a percentage. Seems to me like that's where it's heading. If that's the case, I would say no and look for a different architect. Ms. Steffi's presentation was very good, but there's nothing conservative about the numbers for the reasons that I said at the finance committee. The Act 1 index is 3% projected? What if it goes to 2.5? What if it goes to 2? What if your teacher's contract doesn't pan out? What if we go into a recession? There's nothing conservative about that.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Andrews Law of Providence. Was a question this evening of the capacity on the auditorium. 675, with no explanation. In my mind, a useful auditorium size would be one that could hold any two of the classes, or two of the grades. And the grades are about 400, so, you know, that says to me, maybe the auditorium should be 800. Back when we were getting ideas from the students about the new high school, they had a lot of interest in fixing the crowding of a staircase going to the second floor of the East Wing Building. The students had serious problems with traffic congestion. And I've raised the issue of why not look at a design for that? And I've been met with silence, and the students were met with silence. And that's, a new second-floor corridor might be a quarter million dollars. It's, you know, it's something that you don't need to vote on tonight, but it's something that there are people in the community saying it's needed, and there's silence as to why it's not being considered in any way, shape, or form. On another subject, there were directors this evening who spoke saying that the community must be informed. And there's a community commitment, and we should ask them. Yet there's no postcards. The two meetings that were held for the public in September were very poorly attended. And I think that where we're going to be asking the community to be taxed at index for 10 years, or maybe beyond that, that the vote should be delayed from next week for a month. And in that month, there'll be serious advertised presentations available to the public. That was.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else for courtesy of the floor, do I have any comments from this, from courtesy of the floor? All right. Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Graff, may I second Mr. Winters. Have a good night.